Mr. Chairman, for the way you have to say you need to place these on my end. I'm sorry, you guess you are mumbled, mumbled.
Let's go back, no more.
Mr. Chairman, next up is a public hearing, a continuing public hearing of the capital improvement project on County Road 395 and County Road 38, and Mr. Greg Graham will start off the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner. At the April 9th Board Meeting, the director of Lee's staff to meet with Commissioner Meadows, we've had that meeting, met on April 22nd. At that meeting, there was Mr. Martelli and his clients were at that meeting, and also some other alternatives were proposed that actually haven't been looked at before. And I'm going to go in, first of all, I'd like to let you all know, I did not bring a PowerPoint presentation, so you'll be happy to know that. But I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Cliff Nowell. We've asked him to look at the alternatives that Commissioner Meadows proposed, to vet them, and I think Mr. Martelli and his clients here are here also to speak to it.
Why don't we just come to the, get to the bottom of it, and just tell them what the meeting was very important. We had, we had all the representatives there, everybody decided, and we talked about phasing the improvements in, currently doing nothing at the intersection, with the idea that EBSCO was going to go ahead and dedicate some right-of-way there, and that one of the options was, we could go ahead and put the, move the lane on the west, on the east side of County Road 38, and go ahead and add those lanes there if, if we wanted to after this summer season. But that everyone's consensus was that we, we don't do anything for the time being, and that we, during the peak season, we put a traffic, traffic cop in the intersection, because it's 15 weeks out of the year that this intersection is crowded. And there's, there was consensus that there's really no reason to blow that whole intersection out to a 40-foot section with turn lanes on every side. And that once the hotel gets built, that we would take a look at improving the intersection with the, with the turn lanes. But basically, Cliff, Cliff, is that, basically, that's what we, we came to the conclusion. Is that right, Mr. Martinelli?
Um.
I mean, I don't think we need a full-blown presentation, because I think we've been over this before. I think we just need to tell them what we've decided to do or not do.
Well, good evening. My name is Jim Martelli with Interlight Engineering Company. I represent EBSCO, who owns the northeast corner of this intersection, as well as a few of the property owners on the south side. The chairman of EBSCO is here tonight, Mr. Dixon Brook, who you heard last time, along with his wife Dell. That's true, we did meet with Commissioner Meadows. We were presented with a potential phasing option, which is this exhibit here. And what we heard from that meeting was a point to a couple of things. Number one, keep the character of Old Sea Grove as close to the existing character as we can. Also, improve one of the turn lanes, or one of the segments of the intersection, in this particular case, the eastern leg of the intersection. And also, to Ms. Meadows mentioned, to preserve the parking on 395. This is a, we could call a hybrid sig, a hybrid signal option, that graphically depicts what we discussed at Ms. Meadows' office that day. What this basically shows is an improved intersection on the eastern leg, basically offsetting the through lanes to the north a little bit. That's where the EBSCO property comes in. Also adding a right turn lane, or a D cell, a D cell and right turn lane. Keeping 395 intact, for the most part, with the exception of a minor adjustment, just to get the tie-in, and as well as the western leg of 38, keeping that intact. So that, in essence, is a graphical depiction of what was discussed. Our clients are, are actually in support of this, this option, just as they are, the fully signalized intersection. So whatever the commission decides to do, it looks like it makes sense to put a signal at this intersection, to improve the eastern leg, to try to preserve the priorities of the character of Sea Grove, as well as preserving the parking. And I'm here to share tonight as well, that EBSCO is, first of all, really appreciative of having a spot at the table. We're appreciative to, to be part of the solution with the county. We appreciate Greg and his staff, as well as Cliff and your consultants. It's, it's really been an enjoyable opportunity to work with them, and it's been a collaborative effort all the way. One of the things we ask in return, we're proposing to make available approximately 85 or 8600 square feet of property to get this intersection improvement completed. We would ask for a few simple things. One is a, a offset of property, so whatever we provide the county on the north, we would like to get an offset of that property on the south. That will end up with a net additional area that the county will have above and beyond that offset. For that additional area only, we would be asking for a underlying value of the property to get a credit for our proportionate fair share agreement for Alice Beach, under the same ownership, on the same roadway, 38. As well, we were asking, as a, as a condition, that the multi-use path remain on the north side at this location, for safety concerns. We really believe it's the best suited to go there. And we'd certainly like to continue having a seat at the table as, as your consultants design the project. You didn't answer any questions you may have, and that's really it in a nutshell, Commissioner, I believe.
Yeah.
And if anyone else hasn't.
Mr. Chairman, I've heard the proposal about putting a sheriff's deputy, or the term "traffic cop" at the intersection. And I had the opportunity to talk to Sheriff Atkinson over the weekend about that, and he had some significant concerns about staffing, the shifts, the being outside, and anything else like that. I don't believe he is here tonight, but I too would share those same concerns, and I think that that is, is really a viable option, to have a "traffic cop" there during March, and then the two summer things. But also, Mr. Graham, you had been tasked previously to come back with the additional costs, if, if you shifted away from the roundabout option, to come up with the traffic signal. Do you have those numbers?
That was actually part of the PowerPoint from the ninth, it's about a four.
Do you have the numbers, sir?
It's $400,000 difference, yes.
$400,000 more to put the power poles, or the.
To have a signalized intersection over the roundabout. That's the estimate.
I think one of the things that we talked about, and Jim, you and I talked about this, was no traffic light at this time, leave the blinking light there at this time, because through, especially through the summer season, is not go with a, not go with a traffic light now. That was one of the things we talked about the other day, was don't do the traffic light now, phase it in, and like you and I talked about, leave the intersection exactly like it is, and then in September, if, when, you know, they're going to dedicate the land, if the county wants to go ahead and start building those two lanes on the eastern side, then we go ahead and do that. But we don't go a traffic light without turn lanes, is, is, in my opinion, a waste of money. And that's what the engineers told me as well.
I have a tendency to agree with Mr. Emfell. I just am terribly uneasy about putting a policeman there. First of all, the sheriff should have been consulted about that. It's his personnel, it's his money. I think it's as dangerous to have somebody standing in the middle of the road as, as anything else. So I am, I am just adamantly opposed to a policeman being stationed there.
Well, you know, we, we can do off-duty policemen, or something like that, but I mean, if you, if you go to any major city, even New York, London, anywhere, you, you will see people out in the middle of the road directing traffic. So this is not, you know, a big deal.
Commissioner, if I may.
They also like to make extra money in the summertime.
I, I raised that issue with the sheriff, and I realize he's not here to speak on it, I hate to speak, to speak on his behalf, but one of the things he mentioned is that that is his peak season for when there is demand for his off-duty deputies, so he'd be competing to try and get them on that. He had a, a number of reservations, including the, the environment to be working on, the shifts that would be involved, and all the other.
Well, we could go outside the sheriff's office, and we don't have to have the sheriff's office do it. I mean, there are a lot of places that we could engage people to do that. I mean, it's, it's not, we don't have to get the sheriff's department to do it. But that was, that was an idea that we had, that we'd move the traffic along, rather than blowing this intersection out in the middle of Old Sea Grove, which is the trees and the character of the area, it's just, it's not the solution for this, this particular section. So, and everyone, George Hartley agreed, Billy Bizet was there, he agreed, EBSCO's representative agreed, the county commission agreed, and the neighbors that I've heard from agreed. So, you know, we don't want a, we don't want a traffic circle there. That's just the bottom line. We do not want a traffic circle there. We don't think it's going to work. And so we all sat down at the table and came up with this solution. So that's, I think what we need to do is, is get cost estimates for that phase of this project. And then when George does his hotel on the corner there, then there's going to be some more changes needed, so we'll do them at that time. But right now, there's no reason to blow that road out 40 feet on every side, and take all those parking spaces out, just for 15 weeks out of the year. You know, and spend over a million something dollars right now. It's just, it doesn't make sense to me, and to some of the other people involved here. So I, I would say that we, that we look at a cost estimate for the two lanes, go ahead and do the property swap, or the, the agreement with EBSCO, the property, they want to go ahead and do that, and then decide when we want to put those two lanes in, and then phase the rest of the project when that, when other things are built in that area.
If I may, just to add a couple of pieces here. I think there's a, to go back to your earlier question, Commissioner Meadows, there's a couple of different things here. One is geometric design of the intersection, and one is how you signal it, or how you control the traffic after that point. I believe that, from a geometric standpoint, we spoke of phasing the intersection, exactly how you communicated the second, which, which certainly, if that's the will of the commissioners to put a little higher priority on the character of Old Sea Grove, and on the parking, that that would be a potential solution, and EBSCO would be in favor of, absolutely. We are offering to work with the county to make the property available right now. We do want the eastern leg improved, and the signal aspect of it probably really needs to be looked at a little closer for safety concerns. Certainly, you could phase a stop sign in there, but it may not be the safest for pedestrians when you, when you kind of dig into the details a little bit. I think that needs to be.
Well, there's a, there's a blinking light there now, and, you know, there's a blinking light there now, there's a caution light, and the pedestrians come and go, and the bicyclists come and go. And that actually has striping and marking on it. So it, it's not going to be any different than it's operating now, in my opinion. And there's been no accidents at that intersection, to my knowledge.
Well, I think, you know, from, from EBSCO's perspective, in terms of whether it's a stop sign, or a traffic signal, we don't have a really strong opinion on that portion of it.
Okay.
It's more of the geometrics of the intersection.
Okay.
That the road has shifted, and.
Because you and I had talked about the, the traffic signal, you know, that, that was optional. I thought that's what we kind of had talked about.
Well, I think it needs to be investigated. It certainly could be a phased approach, you put a stop sign, and I'll let Greg speak to that, or Cliff. But the thing is, you may want to get the conduit in place, you may want to get some of those things in place, so you don't have to excavate the road later.
Right, right, exactly, exactly.
From an operational standpoint, the, the traffic cop has not been vetted. In other words, I don't know if a person standing out there directing traffic is going to resolve the issue. It would, I would, it would appear that, obviously, it would help, but that just, for the record, that has not been analyzed.
Yeah, we discussed it at that meeting, and we didn't, we didn't ask for analyzing or anything. We just discussed at the meeting, and everyone thought it might be a good idea.
Right, that's correct. And also, this phased option was also discussed. And I think when we looked at it a little bit harder, we, we kind of felt like, when we started vetting it, it probably would have to be signalized, versus just a three-way stop for it to function with the pedestrian crossing. The, the phase approach is, is just something we had never looked at. I mean, when, when we actually did the operational analysis, it was based on future volumes. There is a potential for this to work fine for a number of years, if we ever get those actual traffic volumes in the future. We may have to actually go in there and do additional improvements of the leg. I think one of the things that, that I got out of that meeting from Commissioner Meadows and a group of the, some of the community that was in that meeting, was, you know, they, they don't, they want to keep more of the rural nature of 38. And so this phased approach would accomplish that, if it's a board's direction. I think we could get behind a phased approach. It may be slightly costly, costlier than if we do it, the full-blown intersection improvement. But we would obviously facilitate all utilities, relocations, in anticipation of having to do a full-blown intersection improvement in the future.
I have a question for Mr. Martelli. Mr. Martelli, when we met, if I recall correctly, you said that any of the options, including roundabout, traffic signal, or phased, would be acceptable, even though you had some preferences, but is that not correct? You indicate any of the three would be acceptable?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'm Dixon Brook. Just wanted to be sure that we're clear, that EBSCO is willing to make our property available, to try to solve the issue at that intersection. And while we have some preferences, the main preference we have is that this body go ahead and decide that it would like to accept our offer of utilizing this property, with the understanding that the intersection will be shifted to the northeast, and that the exchange of property from the north to the property that we have on the south. In other words, we, we will give our property to the north in exchange for some property to the south, to allow the intersection to be relocated. If the county's, if the wish is to phase it, that's, we think, a great option, because it's not overbuilding the intersection before it's actually needed. But that's your decision, and we're, we're comfortable with whatever decision you make in exchange for our willingness to work with you, to try to bring an improvement to that intersection. And last but not least, we, we really want it to be a safe result. We think that's ultimately important, and we think preserving the character of Old Sea Grove is a great objective, and we're all in favor of that. So thank you for your time and attention, appreciate it.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is any public comment?
I'd like to make comments, please. Major Joe Preston, on behalf of the Walton County Sheriff's Office. I think we would do well to consider all the options, but particularly speaking to the comments from Commissioner Emfell and Commissioner Rader, the logistics of placing a human being at that intersection needs to be thoroughly vetted and considered. Having someone on their feet 12 hours a day at 90-plus degree temperatures, and then inclement weather, when it happens to be raining, everybody comes off the beach, and they're in their vehicles, and they're going, it's not a very practical solution. Going outside the sheriff's office, the county assumes a lot of liability. If you don't have someone there that knows what they're doing, and they cause an accident, or direct traffic, or pedestrian traffic into the street in unsafe condition, you now assume that liability for that individual, or they must carry the riders for, for that type of responsibility. So I understand what we're trying to accomplish here, we're trying to balance the old and the scenic and rustic with new construction and new growth, and everything else, it's a very difficult challenge you have in front of you. But again, I would just encourage you and implore you to thoroughly vet and consider all these options. While it may seem expedient, and not that much impact to place a human body there, there's a lot of logistical concerns to that. So I applaud you for keen on that.
Let me ask you a question on that. There wouldn't be out there 12 hours, obviously. We have some peak times that, you know, traffic backs up, and it's, it's, they're all stopping, because it's a three-way stop. So the traffic is, is slow, very slow, because it backs up. And so the peak times are check-in and check-out on Saturdays, of course, and then Friday night, down at the intersection there, close to the V. So the idea was not to have somebody stand out there in 110-degree heat all day long. The idea was that, in many places, you know, you have someone who is a directional person, who is directing, like they do at the school crossings, or when there is a wreck or something, you have a policeman who's going, you know, this way, this way, this way. That, that was kind of the.
And I applaud that, I think that's a creative solution, I'm just saying we need to think through that. Even if we do it for the short period of time, Commissioner, what we have is, you have that unknown predictability.
Right.
And a lot of times, you may think it's two hours, and if we've got an intersection backed up, we can't walk away at that point. So that two hours now turns into four hours.
And what we thought was that it, we would, we would try it out for a, a time period, and see how it worked. And that was kind of the discussion in the group. So, you know, that, that's, that's how we had thought about that. So, you know, we think that it is, it is a neighborhood, and there's a lot of traffic coming through. So we would prefer not to have traffic speed up and go through there very quickly, we would prefer to have a stop, I think, and then go forward. And if anyone else wants to add some input on the idea about having a directional person there at peak times, you know, we welcome the comments.
Please, please understand, the sheriff's office will work with you, and would like to partner with you in trying to solve this issue. I just want to make sure that that idea gets thoroughly vetted.
Yeah, of course, of course. We're not going to just, yeah, throw somebody out there tomorrow. No, we had talked about it, and that was one of the solutions that we thought, let's try that during this summer season, the peak hours, and see, see if it works, see how it works. Instead of going out and putting a lot of pavement, 40 feet of pavement on all sections, which when you look at the whole entire section, it runs all the way down to the west, in front of these houses, and then it runs all the way south, and north, down 395, to the intersection of the Grove Street. So there's more to it than just the intersection. There's everything east and west and south. So when you start improving all of that area, you're losing all of those parking spaces there along that strip, which people count on to park for that, for that, there's nowhere else to park. So, you know, with all these considerations coming together, the consensus of the group was, you know, let's phase it, let's, let's, if EBSCO wants to go ahead and give the property, let's, let's do that in a, in a form of an agreement. But let's take a long, hard look before we put 40 feet of pavement, you know, a couple hundred feet on, on all sections.
Yeah, I applaud you, I think that's a very prudent way to proceed with this. Again, you know, we'd like to be your partner in this, and the sheriff's office would like to help the county in this, and lend some expertise to this. Obviously, that's supposed to do for a living, and we would be very happy to work with you and thoroughly vet and explore all the pluses and minuses associated with that.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. If I could just add a couple little things. One is that, something that you might want to consider, and I've been working on this intersection for quite a long time, one of the things that you might want to consider is to go ahead and get the utilities put underground. Right now, there's a tremendous number of poles, and wires, and major, major utility infrastructure that's in the area that you're going to need to move in order to put the right turn lane in. In other words, the concept plan that he's showing right here, there's a tremendous amount of utilities that are in this corner, that something would have to be done with those before you could, before this could be built. So I would encourage you guys to go ahead and put all the underground utilities in, as kind of your phasing plan. And then, if, for example, a year or two later on, you guys decide to go to a signalized intersection, or go do something different, everything's out of your way already. And that was a significant, significant part of the budget for this project. That was $350,000 to put the utilities underground. But once that's done, and those utilities are out of your way, it gives you lots of options to be able to add on to it in the future, in any which way you want to do it. And, and you guys have already budgeted the money for that anyways.
What would be involved in that, Cliff?
Well, right, right here on this corner, there is a gigantic concrete pole that's about 24-inch diameter, that holds up the planet Earth on that corner. So that pole right there is a big part of, of the, of the need to put things underground in that area. And that, that was one of the major costs in that, in the project, was trying to get the utilities to a position where we would have some flexibility with the intersection. Right now, you have almost no flexibility.
Right, right.
So I, I would just, I would just suggest to you guys that if you're, if you're going to do the phased approach, and go the direction that Mr. Martelli has shown on this, that you consider going ahead and getting the utilities under control, so that if you decide to do something different in the future, you're already ready to go.
Cliff, was that part of the action the board took last August?
Yes, it was. Yep, sure was. So I, it's funding-wise, and budget-wise, and all those types of things, it's already there. Yeah.
You know, there's been a comment made tonight that about, you know, the county's going to grow, it's beginning to grow again. And, you know, we're often accused of being too late, or we didn't act fast enough, or, you know, now 38's crowded, because 20 years ago, we didn't realize it was going to be major to our favor. So I'm all in favor of us looking to the future, 10 or 20 years down the road, at every, every intersection we have, and this one in particular. What's it going to be like in 10 years? Shouldn't we go ahead and try to solve the problem now? Why wait till there's a, you know, even a worse need, and then try to do something?
Any other public comments here?
Ron Ramon, Santa Rosa Beach. I drive through this intersection probably five, six times a day, and in the season, it's, you know, 30, 40-minute backup. One of the main reasons for the backup, or a big reason for that backup, is the multi-use path is used by all of them, tourists, bicyclists, everyone. And I heard something interesting from the engineer, and I chuckled, that it made more sense to keep the path on the north side of the road where it cuts, because what happened is, everyone tries to turn right, and they can't. The bicyclists, the walkers, and everyone else, they have to stop. And that's a big source of the traffic backup. The bike path is on the south side of the road until just before this intersection cuts over, goes north, and then goes back south again later. If the bike path were on the south side of the road, and stayed on the south side, there would be a couple homeowners on the south side who might not like it, but it's mainly the south side. But you get rid of all the bicyclists, walkers, possible traffic accidents, people turning, everything moves to the south, traffic flows on the bike path without stopping, and all the traffic turning and coming back and forth, it just seems like a no-brainer to have it on the south side of the road. Logistically, making it work for a long time.
One of the issues on the south side is there's 17 driveways right along that, that way. And so you've got people with short driveways who are backing out. And so that creates the, the issue with the sidewalk, with the bike path on the south. The north side, of course, that whole section. And unused. So that's why, you know, the side, the bike path is, is on the north side, but.
Because it's on the south side for, you know, 138, glad Ryan walked in, everybody has to back out of the driveways. But it's, it means so many people are just stuck there trying to turn right, waiting, and then just.
Yeah. But, you know, and we think we have that issue.
Or do you do another, or do you do another path, like at East Side? I mean, it's something to think about. If you had a little underpass under the road even, and as crazy as that sounds, the amount of traffic on that path is huge. I don't know what the logistics are, it's pretty high there, though. If somehow the road kind of came up, or just went down underneath it, like it does in San Destin.
You're talking about San Destin.
Where it comes underneath it, and then you never have anyone stopping, talking about the future, Miss Man, or future traffic problems. It's amazing the backup there of waiting for people. And you can stop and be stuck, and they're just bike after bike after bike going by. If all that was under, the traffic just flows much easier through there. Just thought.
Thank you.
It might be a good time to talk about the utilities, looking at putting the box under. It is time, you know, to start phasing this stuff.
Yeah, could you do that, look, Cliff?
Go ahead, Neilson. I think Ron's, Ron's comments were very interesting about an underpass.
I think Ron's, Ron's comments were very interesting about an underpass. But back to the sheriff and back to a traffic cop, I'm a little shocked at Mr. Enfield and Miss Commander's negativity in such a quick rush. Having lived and walked and muted into Manhattan for a number of years, I lived with traffic cops, okay? Saw them every day handling multiple lanes of traffic and corners, okay? What we have not had in Walton County historically is we've never really had traffic cops here that really do traffic like in large cities. And I've been here since 97 and I truly have never come upon an accident where I really see a traffic cop directing traffic like you would in a large city around these accidents. It's kind of helter-skelter and it's like maybe they have had a little training in directing traffic, but not really directing traffic. And I think that we don't need to just jump to conclusions, no, we shouldn't have it and how are we going to fund it and how are we going to have the person and it's going to be 12 hours and it's going to be in the heat. No, it doesn't need to be 12 hours and they can do it on the heavy times. But we should get someone trained as a professional traffic cop, like you see in New York City and have seen for a century, and get them down here and try it out on Saturday mornings and Friday nights and Saturday nights and see how it works. Now, we can't tell Sheriff Atkinson what to do, but we can ask him for help and we can encourage it and there ought to be ways to find out how to work his staffing from the north and the south and how to find such a person or get such a person from here to go up and get trained and be trained in professional traffic cop duties. I'm sorry, but it's not rocket science. It's been around for 100 years and we ought to be able to find a person to give it a whirl on 38 this summer.
Ms. Nielsen, I'd like to address your comments just a moment, please. I don't think it was meant in negativity is that the sheriff was not even consulted ahead of time on this and he'd be a stakeholder in this and I think it's very important. I had the opportunity to talk to him about it and he raised quite a bit of reservation about it. You heard from Mr. Preston a few minutes ago that he's got some concerns as well. They've just never been vetted with a sheriff. So before just saying, hey, our answer is to put a traffic cop in there...
No, I agree.
Well, it's not negative. It's that you've got a stakeholder that would be involved that was never consulted.
But the whole, I'd agree with that point, but the fact that standing a person in the middle of the road is a real big issue, no. It's in New York City with all these lanes coming and going at one main intersection with multi-lanes and no, they stand in the middle of the road and they've done it fine for years and years and years.
If you think that with the sheriff.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I never dreamed, you know, the reason that we didn't consult, I guess I never dreamed that it would be a big issue to have somebody move traffic around out in the middle. I mean, I guess that's, I figured that that's what they did and that they would not have a problem with it. So, you know, pardon me.
The gentleman, Mr. Romano, actually has a good point with the pedestrians. The pedestrian loading in this area is just tremendous and that is a big reason that there's such a problem at the intersection. It's not just the cars, it's the pedestrian movements at the intersection that really cause a big portion of the backup. And of course, everybody at my office thought I was crazy when I came up with the, with the tunnel approach, but it actually does work there and the groundwater table is well over 20 feet deep in the area. So that actually is a feasible option at this intersection, believe it or not.
But wouldn't it be feasible if we wanted to do that at this time and just moving utilities to be...
Well, you would need to include that as part of the utility relocate project and anticipate what elevation the tunnel would be at. It'd basically just be a big box culvert is what it would be. So I know it sounds silly and it sounds crazy, but it actually is a great application at this intersection.
Anyone else?
Next question goes to... She's tried three times.
Sandy Luttrell. I just came from, I just came from Santibel Island and you know how you come across the Causeway right to a very similar intersection to the one we have out here on 38. And yes, they have a policeman there. He directs traffic. There is a sign next to the intersection that says $75 fine for failure to yield to a bike, a pedestrian, et cetera. So if they can do it on Santibel, that would be a good place for the sheriff to get in touch with to find out how they do that. The policeman stands out there with their reflective vest on.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Motion to close publication.
Motion to close publication.
Second.
Motion to say the all those in favor. It's a public motion.
I make a motion that we, that we go ahead and enter into agreements with EBSCO on the property part of the equation and that we proceed with a phased approach with the eastern portion of the project, amending the budget however we need to. I know it's not going to be the cost that we had originally projected for phase one at least, maybe for the whole project, but do the intersection improvements, phase it. What was the other part of the...
Utilities?
Utilities. Go ahead and as maybe phase one of the project, go ahead and bury the utilities and then move forward on the actual lane improvements on the east side.
What about the box, the back box?
The box, the, that would, that would be a redesign, wouldn't it? Wouldn't that be a redesign, the culvert and all that? Could you...
You know, in concept, it's a great idea. I think it needs to be vetted.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not, it's not part of the plan now. Maybe if we held off on phase one and we had them look at that, have them go ahead and bury the utilities because we know that that's part of it.
Maybe what we need to do is bury the utilities with this in mind that this may take place where we don't have to relocate utilities.
We can look at that. The utility relocation is going to take months, I can tell you.
And you can't really start until after the season.
That's true. You would not want to start on that at this time. I'm absolutely positive of that. So, so we can take a look at the tunnel. You know, part of it depends on are you eventually going to end up with turn lanes on all three legs? If you end up with turn lanes on all three legs, then it limits your space for the tunnel. If you, if you only add turn lanes on the westbound traffic, then a tunnel has plenty of room to make it work. So as Greg said, you know, it needs to be vetted a little bit and we'll help with Public Works any way we can.
Commissioner, just make sure I understand the motion. Is enter to an agreement with EBSCO for any possibly property swap that may be needed for whatever the design turns out to be.
Right, they, yeah, I think, I think it's, it's, it's the property that they're going to give is, is good for all three scenarios.
And the second, we would be proceeding separate phases, phases, amend the budget if necessary and then put the utilities underground.
Right, exactly. And then, and work with them on their impact, on their proportion of fair share and that kind of thing. That's my, that would be my motion.
I have a second. I'll step down and make, check on that motion.
We have a motion in a second. I do have one question. How does the land and the proposals they've made, if, affect the roundabout? And how does, how does the bicycle and pedestrian traffic, how does, how will that be affected with this roundabout? Do they just cross and what the cars are circling or, you know?
We're not, they're not...
I'm asking Mr. Grant, please.
I think Cliff can point to the, see where the roundabout crossing is. It's on the Splinter Island. And basically, people circling in the roundabout have to yield to pedestrians. It would yield. That will affect the operation of the intersection if there's a heavy pedestrian movement.
And the parking goes away and the bike path gets moved way down to the, to the north end of 395 with the roundabout was what I was told. The traffic would, the bike path would go, if you're going to Seaside, you would go down there, you would turn right on 395, would go down 395, you would cross 395.
This is a crossing right there.
Okay. But when the, when the hotel goes in, you're going to have another driveway there. That is going to be a very, very bad place to cross. It's better if you cross it the way that Jim Martelli has it designed in that non-roundabout. In my opinion, it's more dangerous with that than it is with the way he has it designed in there.
That is typically in the roundabout handbook, how you cross people is at the Splinter Island, at that location.
On the roundabout?
A little bit more unconventional is where one comes that did show it, where they were crossing up here. That's what you're talking about, Commissioner.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm talking about. How does a semi-truck, trailer truck get through that?
Fantastic. Believe it or not, a 55-foot trailer goes through this with no problem from any direction.
And it stays on the pavement and out of the circle.
Yes, ma'am. And this plan also, I mean, you lose, you're losing about six spaces at the intersection. Beyond that, those, the spaces are actually still intact beyond those. And, you know, another scenario that we looked at is, is actually room for additional parking on 395 further down to the, further down to the north. So there's a possibility that you could take those five spaces out and replace them further down the road.
No, they're already, no, they're, I live there on that corner. I walk that corner every night with the dogs. I live there every day of the year. That enters, that, the West Grove and East Grove, parking for the V is, is in those 12 spaces, is all the way down 395 toward Publix right now. And you take away those spaces and, you know, you're, you're going to be at Publix. So if you want cars backing out into 395, all up and down that hilly section, yeah, push the parking further on down. But, you know, you're not looking at the whole picture. I mean, it, the whole picture of this thing is not just that little roundabout. And, and I think that's what you're missing. And I think you're also missing the idea that the people in the area do not want a roundabout. I've got myriad of emails, they do not want a roundabout. I don't know why that, you know, we keep pushing a roundabout. We do not want a roundabout there.
Yeah, I'm not pushing a roundabout. The Commissioner asked me a question. That's the only reason I got it up here.
Yeah, but, you know, we're back to the roundabout, but, you know, the, the consensus is, is that the people do not want a roundabout.
Just for the record, Public Works has not been pushing anything. They have not, we have not been pushing a roundabout versus a signalized intersection. This came before the board and alternatives were presented back in 2008 as options. Both options will work to move traffic. Now, what we're hearing now is there's other considerations that are more important than moving potentially the traffic. And one is parking the commercial needs of the restaurant and the surrounding commercial needs. And then the other is the fact that you don't want to have that urban feel.
Right, because you actually have someone on the commission who lives there and, and talks with everyone around there and gets input. And that's the difference. And, and that's, that's what I'm saying. So, you know, I don't know how, how plain, more plain I can, I can get.
So I think what the board has in front of them is three alternatives, roundabout, full-blown signal, and the phased approach.
No, now the direction was that we go back and that we all meet and we all sit down and we all talk about what we wanted. We did that. And what came out of that meeting is what we should be talking about tonight. My, my feeling is, we had all these folks that are surrounding this, we had, everybody sat down and said, we don't want a roundabout, we don't want 40-foot lanes on three sides. And that's what this, this board authorized us to do. So we've come back, that's what we're talking about. And now we're still seeing roundabouts. So, you know, that's why I keep saying, why do you keep pushing a roundabout? It seems to me as if a roundabout is being pushed. The consensus of the group was that we go with a phased approach and that we, we start out, we take the property that EBSCO is offering us at this point and we phase it in because it's 15 weeks out of the year that this is, this is crowded. That to me does not make sense that you put in a, an urban intersection in a, a place that has issues 15 weeks out of a year. The rest of 38 cannot be three-laned or four-laned. So, you know, as far as planning for future traffic, you can't, you can't. We're going to have to go to multimodal transportation on 38 because it cannot be four-laned. There's not the right-of-way. So as far as the future goes and that, you know, I don't think we need to blow out this particular intersection in Seagrove thinking that we're accommodating future traffic.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I was one of the question. Commissioner Meadows' motion did not include putting the traffic person in, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
She did not include...
No, that's not in my motion, no.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Yes.
Okay, we're back to square one. Yeah, motion fails for, for lack of...
I think it's on the next motion, the next item on the business agenda.
Well, y'all want to just do nothing? Do nothing?
Well, I mean, you had a board action last August that's already been in process. Money's been spent, engineering costs have been involved. I think the direction was to keep going forward. I don't know why they stopped with regard to burying the utilities underground. It probably should have been done last year.
We still have the issue with the right-of-way and that still may be able to be solved, I think, by doing the right-of-way swap. I think that fits all three of those options, so I'm going to go back to the original one.
Last option was extremely broad. If it's just the narrow one on the land swap...
And the buried utilities.
Buried utilities are already part of what's, that's part of the, it's already there.
We still had to work out the issues with the landowner, which I think, you know, they presented an option for us today of doing that land swap. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir. I mean, all those options will work within, with the land deal that's proposed. I mean, the right-of-way that is proposed to be swapped was actually driven by the roundabout. The offset intersection was actually looked at when we were going down the roundabout path to make sure that potentially if the roundabout failed in the future, that we could actually do a signalized intersection within the trade that we were going to make on the right-of-way. So all options that I spoke to are, will work with the land deal as proposed. And that was a great opportunity to, to do that.
Well, I guess the question...
I did not understand...
I guess the question then is, you know, is EBSCO ready to do the same dedication with a roundabout?
Well, if it's going to be needed in all three, I did not understand that, that we need this no matter what scenario we use. Is that correct? No matter what scenario, we need the land swap. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes, sir. Come, come. There will be a little bit more right-of-way required for the roundabout than the signal. We mentioned earlier that our preferences were the signal first by a little bit and then the roundabout. We're okay with the roundabout. However, it will take a little bit more property that the county will need from us than the signal would.
I will make a motion then that we, we go into negotiations with that, because...
The whole proof, the board. You talked about the last board, previous board made the motion, that's what you talked about there.
Not that, that, that with the right-of-way issue.
Not with the right-of-way.
The right-of-way issue, I don't think it's been done.
Okay, okay.
So can we make a, can, I make a motion that we negotiating with them on the, on land swap. And no matter what scenario, they can come back to us with, with an agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion to say, all those in favor? All those opposed?
No.
Motion secured.
Motion secured.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andy Alexander, and I live here in Santa Rosa Beach. For the past seven or eight months, I've been working on an artificial reef idea to implement here in South Walton to give us some advantages that geographically speaking we don't possess by the fact that we don't have a pass in the, in the bay, I mean, to the, to the Gulf. So, through the research of this, I found that the majority of the stakeholders were interested in, in three specific projects, and that was an oyster habitat restoration project in the bay, which provides a opportunity for not only recreational fishing, but also in the near future, an, an economic return from the harvest of oysters. The, another large majority of the group was in favor of near-shore snorkel reefs for families and, and water enthusiasts to snorkel about and enjoy. And then there was a great amount of enthusiasm towards the idea of creating some near-shore habitat for recreational fishing and skin diving. So, I started to attend some seminars, I met with Billy McKee on several occasions, and through those months, we have come to this plan that I've put together, and I'm gonna hand out to you, there's a couple of pages here that, um... What we found was that the, the county has applied for two permits for offshore artificial reefs. Those are two and a half to four and a half miles offshore. And with the population as it is and our tourist base in Walton County as it is, we've, we've seen that there's an explosion in the human propulsion kayak paddleboard-style recreation activities. There's a lot of ecotourism in the Dune Lakes with glass-bottom kayaks. And so, melding all these ideas into fruition, there, uh, we came up with this plan, create 18 different sites. It gives a broad distribution along the, along the, the Gulf Coast where it's not favoring the east or the west side. The sand or snorkel reefs were located at the Miramar location, the Miramar Beach Access, which is very heavily used, Topsil Beach, Grayton Beach, State Park, and Inlet Beach. The nine snorkel reefs were distributed throughout the public beach accesses along 30A with about a two-mile frequency between them. And the oyster reefs, we've tentatively identified some sites where there is existing oysters, and we're going into a habitat restoration concept. There's a lot of partial funding for all projects from various different government entities. So, we chose to form a 501(c) non-for-profit corporation, which gives us the ability to not only seek independent monies from BP programs, but also matching funds from the FWC, as well as charitable contributions from corporations and private citizens. There is a, a, a 501 down in Mexico Beach called the Mexico Beach Artificial Reef Association. Here's a, here are what they put out every year, uh, advertising for their, their kingfish tournament. They have a pass down there, they have this tournament, they chose the slowest weekend of the summer season, which was the last weekend before Labor Day. And after 17 years, this weekend, that tournament now brings that community on to par with occupancy with the Fourth of July weekend. So, having something like that as an opportunity for South Walton, you can see in there, those are all private companies or, or public, pipe, uh, sorry, private or individuals who contribute the ad space to that. So, the 501(c) that we're planning on creating is a self-sustaining entity. The permitting process for the locations is what I petitioned the TDC to look into assisting in the funding process. It's a lengthy and expensive process, as y'all have been aware of with what we've done in some other areas. And this morning, I was pleased to see that they voted unanimously to agree to a budget amendment to fund the Phase 1 implementation, which gives us about 18 months to two years of, of location and, and, and work to permit those sites. And it's our hope that you guys will see the validity of this program and, and support the budget amendment.
Did the TDC say when they're gonna bring that amendment to the board?
No, sir, I didn't ask. They voted on it this morning.
Are we saying it'd be in next year's budget or this year's amendment?
I believe they put it in this year's.
It was, yes, yes, Miss Commander, it was an amendment to the 2012-13 budget.
Stand.
Thank you, sir.
See if I can get this correct, because there was a motion and it was amended three The motion was to, uh, recommend to the BCC the amendment of the current TDC budget to include $394,840 for the purpose of permitting for the artificial reef project to promote tourism, and that the TDC is repaid dollar for dollar from any restore or NERDA funding the county receives.
Any questions?
You can't, you can't refund. That's right. Um, you know, Restore will not let you, you know, spend money now and then, and then pay back. Restore will not let you do that, so, yeah. So, I mean, I'm not saying I'm against the project, I'm just saying, under the store, you can't, you can't pay back the kid, you know?
I think, quite, I think what the intent of the TDC was, commissioners, was that the county and this entity would be seeking restore funding for the total amount of the project. And should the county receive any funding towards this project, that the initial cost that is advanced by the TDC will be paid back. It may be just an accounting line from one to the other, but as far as the actual ability to have it repaid, we're not saying that the TDC or the county should seek direct reimbursement from this as much as the project. If funded, we request the money be transferred back out of the general fund of the county to the TDC is what the TDC's request was.
Craig, excuse me, I'm confused. Where would the money come from to pay back?
If the county receives funding for this project, and I believe, I can turn over Mr. McAdams here and talk about the overall cost. The overall cost of this project is to be several million dollars over a number of phases, should that money be received. And I believe it's structured a way that you can present different phases of the project so it can, it's not an all-or-nothing type of proposal. There may be parts of it that can be advanced as opposed to some parts that cannot.
So, the proposal would be to take $394,000, change of TDC money in the current year, redirect it from what to do this?
It's an anticipated revenue. It would be in the current year's budget. TDC made a finding, this is where they believe this would fall under the statute of promotion of tourism. This is obviously a not-for-profit corporation, the reef obviously is open to the public, therefore it falls under the definition of things that could be permissible if the board agrees. The TDC council felt there's an appropriate use absent this window, and what we were presented with, and I'll defer to Mr. Sunday to talk about what the council was presenting, there's obviously a window of time here when permitting must occur. And if the permitting process takes 18 months to two years, it may be that this ship has sailed, so to speak. The TDC thought the benefit to moving forward now and at least starting that opportunity outweighed waiting until trying to put the entire process through Restore or through NERDA with no permitting, when those are factors specifically with NERDA, as well as with Restore, the projects are in fact permitted or have been approved by the state, there's an enhanced chance of their being received, of approval being received at the local level as well as at the state level. So, that's where the TDC's counsel was, and I'll obviously defer to Mr. Sunday if that's misstated, and the council did this morning.
The unanticipated revenue is?
I'll defer to Mr. Sunday on that.
I believe, Commissioner, right now, we're at 21% over last year by any bed tax collections.
How are you compared to this year's budget though? Are you in line with this year's budget, or are you that much ahead of this year's budget?
You're referring to 2013, that would be this.
This, this year, this year's budget. 21% over last year.
What you anticipate?
Last year's budget is not this year's budget, so the question is, how are you, are you running ahead of this year's budget?
Currently, we're running 21% ahead of anticipated revenues.
Okay.
But, and, and I say, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against the project, I think it's gonna, but you cannot anticipate that we get restore funds and to replace these, Restore, you cannot replace the funds.
And the council was advised, of course, this morning, there are no guarantees of that, as one of the large concerns of the TDC council was if there was any eligible reimbursement through NERDA or Restore, the request the TDC council simply made this board, was if the board approved it, the TDC would request that if the board should receive money that would cover the permitting process, that it be paid back. If it's not, that's understandable, but the question is, if it is received, would it be repaid to the TDC rather than be a blank check? And Commissioner Crater, obviously, I understand your point that that's not possible, but we're obviously understanding that Commissioner McAdams, I don't want to step on his toes, the way it's presented is, he's not looking at this from solely a restore pot, he has a number of other situations that he intends to advance, looking at partnership opportunities in the county for other pots of money from BP to do that. And so, the TDC's council request to you was to do that. Obviously, it's to this board's discretion whether or not they accept that recommendation in full or with modifications.
So, the, the recommendation would be to, the board tonight to amend the budget?
To amend.
Unanticipated revenue in order to cover this project?
To cover the permitting fees and the specific...
It's the permitting fees for the 18 sites, that only is what we're seeking here.
What's the dollar?
$394,000.
$394,000.
I have, I have concerns on several levels. Let me start with first, I think we might have a public hearing to amend.
Resolution for unanticipated revenue.
Yes, my second, but that aside, my second is, to, to spend the TDC money, we're gonna have to have an affirmative finding that the permitting process is reasonably related to tourism development.
And that, and the TDC council was part of their motion today, we specifically asked both Mr. Andrews and Ms. Cogwell, who made the second, that based off the presentation we received from Mr. McAdams, that showed the growth revenue, there were a number of other things, I'll defer to Mr. Sunday, who has that presentation, I believe, that's not for that, but that they didn't believe that this expenditure would promote tourism within this state under 125.014, and that is part of their motion to you. Obviously, the board has to make that legislative finding, and I thought Mr. Davis, I thought we were doing, that must be implicit in your decision to expend these monies.
Please understand that if you make that legislative finding, and it's later determined that they're not reasonably related, obviously, the money would've been considered a spent appropriately, for lack of a better word. So, just make sure you understand that what they're asking is a, is, is a request to spend money, TDC money, for permitting process for this project, and you have to make an affirmative finding that spending the money for the permitting process is reasonably related to the development of tourism.
But we need a public hearing to do that, correct?
We need a public hearing to do that, I don't want you to have a public hearing to do that.
A legislative finding can be made outside of the public hearing, as long as it is duly noticed, public meeting in which, in which a forum's present.
So, we need to actually publicize this?
No.
No?
Well, I'll defer to Mr. Davis, whether he would prefer this to be brought back as a second amendment item, I believe it's, and certainly we can bring it back up at the next meeting under the TDC rather than as a citizen comment. I know it has been this board's practice in the past to not vote on matters presented in the citizen comment, and so that's certainly what's happened. But, obviously, that did happen today, that's what the TDC staff was this morning in passing that motion.
And I'm the one comfortable with that doing that in the citizen comments, I think it's probably appropriate to bring that in.
We certainly defer to Mr. Davis, Mr. Sunday agrees to present that in the next time. Also, I think it may be a bonus precaution, just Mr. Davis concerned that if we do have Mr. Sunday present it, that possibly he can put on the slide show the TDC council saw, so it'll be explicit to what Ms. Meadows has already seen, but that would also give you something in your record to show what your legislative finding was based on. Obviously, it'd be a little difficult under the citizen comment at times, but not for that to happen.
It would certainly help us build a case if we ever had to, to make that reasonable relationship connection.
And I would note, the Attorney General has addressed the propriety of building artificial reefs, of course, it all comes to council dollars, and specifically has found it is appropriate in one of two circumstances. One is after a finding by the board that the construction of the reef and the cost incurred would be to promote tourism, or two, that if the reef itself is part of a nature center, uh, the TDC, as we discussed, this is not part of a larger proposed nature center at this time, so it would have to fall under the promotion of tourism.
And, and again, I don't think there's any argument that the reefs themselves would be, it's because it's divided the way it is, between the permitting versus the whole project, then there might be a question, so we would have to take a record of some kind regarding the reef from next.
Well, if we need a motion, I make the motion that we bring this back under the TDC at our next board meeting.
No, we just...
Okay, just do it, okay?
That is board reaction, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Detective.
Thank you.
Tom Walther.
I'm a Walton County resident, Walton County homeowner, Walton County commercial property owner, and a small local business owner in Walton County for over 25 years. I'm blessed to own businesses and commercial properties, but both my sons in Walton County, even better, I work with both of my sons every day. We're family. Both of my sons and their families also live, own homes, and vote in Walton County. We all church in Walton County. My grandchildren go to school in Walton County, so I trust you can appreciate that the Walther family has a vested interest in this county. This afternoon, I'm here to represent one of the family businesses, the Electric Kart Company. I'm here also to represent the interest of other business and property owners on US Highway 98 who, like us, are being adversely affected by the scenic corridor code that prohibits the outdoor display of merchandise, goods, and products within 400 feet of US 98. The Electric Kart Company business was conceived in 2008 and formally opened in February 2009 in the former Dixon appliance property next to John John's Auto on 98. Before, our doors had been open for even two weeks. We were warned by code enforcement that we were in violation of the scenic corridor code because we had parked a few electric golf carts outside in front of our building. Subsequently, we would learn that code enforcement had responded to a complaint from a member of the scenic corridor design review board. On March 24th, 2009, I appeared before the Board of County Commissioners to respond to this complaint, to try to get the commissioners to take a look at the part of the code that dealt with outdoor display, to try to make some sense of the impact of our new business. The only solution at the time from county planning staff was to seek a deviation from the design review board. Naively at the time, I followed the advice of the planning staff. On May 7th, 2009, the design review board denied our business's request for deviation. Initially, we were shocked. In 2009, we were the subject of just how this code-prescribed deviation process was organized. You lose. However, the DRB's attorney determined the board had voted improperly on May 7th, so another vote of, would have to have been taken. A few months later, on August 19th, 2009, a new vote was taken to legally finalize our request for deviation. At this meeting, there were five members of the board present constituting a quorum. A majority of the members present voted for the deviation that we had requested for our business. We thought we had won. Wrong. Very long story, shortened. We learned that another part of the code requires four concurring votes for deviation, not just a majority. We learned that our only recourse for appeal, once again outlined by the code, would be to appeal to the Board of Adjustment. What an education in county government, what a disappointment. I will always remember that the end of this meeting on August 19th, 2009, Gary DeMires approached me, shook my hand, and told me I'd done a good job. He commented, "It is unfortunate to win the battle but lose the war." And this resonated with me. He was right. We had won the battle, we lost the war, we did not understand the rules of engagement in Walton County. While weighing our options over the next few days, I met with the Director of Code Enforcement. I asked him if there was really any other option to resolve our plight short of going forward with a full-scale appeal to the Board of Adjustments. Within a month, I was delivered a copy of our understanding from the meeting in writing. This understanding was concurred with by not only code enforcement managers... This understanding was concurred with by not only code enforcement manager at the time, Kevin Hargett, but also Planning Manager Matt Carpenter and Development Services Division Manager at that time, Gary DeMiers. All of these county officials agreed that the quote, "location where the golf carts have been placed on the porch on the slab does not add to the clutter of the scenic corridor," end quote. The document goes on to state that, quote, "At this time, code enforcement considers this case closed and the property in compliance, as long as no more than three carts are located on slab," end quote. Fast forward. In November of last year, we moved to our new showroom, less than a mile east into the Landing Shopping Center on Highway ninety-eight, next to Louis Louis Restaurant. Our new retail space is almost three times larger than our original building. Our original location had a porch that was sixty feet long and five feet wide. Our new location has a sixty-foot porch, but this porch is eleven and a half feet wide, more than two and a half times as large as the original porch. At our original location, the porch slab was located seventy-five feet from the pavement on Highway ninety-eight. At our new location, the porch slab is positioned two hundred and eighty-five feet from the pavement. So our new location in the Landing Shopping Center, our porch is not only significantly larger, it is almost four times further back from Highway ninety-eight than previously allowed by the county, as documented by code enforcement in two thousand nine. A couple of weeks ago, on April thirtieth, we received another warning from code enforcement that we were in violation of the code at our new location because we had three electric carts on the slab under our porch on display. Again, please remember, we're currently located less than a mile from the location where we received our first violation in two thousand nine. So given this information, the current code enforcement management has evidently chosen not to recognize the resolution agreed to in two thousand nine to officially close the case made by the same agency of the county. This was the same policy that was approved by the then-county managers responsible for this code. Two of the three county employees are still in management positions with the county, I believe. This is very difficult for me to wrap my head around. Why, I ask? As you are no doubt aware, during the week of April thirtieth, code enforcement issued over forty warnings to other businesses on Highway ninety-eight for violating the scenic corridor code with regard to outdoor display. Like us in two thousand nine, some of these businesses have never even heard of the scenic code before. Literally dozens of the county's businesses, properties, employees, families, and way of life are currently being adversely affected by this code. Was this enforcement spontaneous or well-planned? I don't know. As a business owner, as a commercial property owner, as a homeowner, and as a voting citizen in this county, it is obvious that something is broken, that something was broken four years ago, that something must be done about the outdoor display restrictions in the scenic corridor code for Highway ninety-eight. Something needed to be done in two thousand nine, and it should be evident, something needs to be done in two thousand thirteen. Same problem, just four years later. Can we wait four more years to do something? Surely, this must be obvious to you too, as commissioners. So this afternoon, we request the commissioners to form an ad hoc study committee of affected business and property owners to provide appropriate and alternative input for your consideration, as specifically related to the outdoor display issue. Additionally, we request the commissioners to postpone the enforcement of any violations from the recent warnings issued related to the outdoor display of merchandise until such time as you, our elected county leadership, has an opportunity to review the suggestions proposed by this ad hoc committee. Last week, many of the affected businesses began to circulate a petition that directly addresses our concern in this request in particular. We believe that it is important for our employees to know what is going on, as well as our customers. We plan to present the petition to the commissioners next month. I really have to believe that each of you, as our elected government leaders, understand that most businesses in South Walton depend on the summer season to generate up to seventy-five percent of their annual revenue. I find it equally difficult, however, to imagine that this same leadership would choose now to unreasonably restrict business on Highway ninety-eight during the coming tourist season. You must admit, this is really bad timing. If drastic changes are needed to improve and are managed the way a local business has been using the outdoor display of merchandise, goods, or products within the scenic corridor to promote their business, I would hope the commissioners would not intentionally initiate such unexpected enforcement, and at such a time, that will deliver the most economic damage to every local business concerned. Our county has been blessed to see business returning in our area. As you know, two thousand nine was a good year, and two thousand ten was horrible. Thank you, BP. For those of us that survived two thousand ten, the year two thousand eleven was a huge challenge. Two thousand twelve got a little better and even began to show promise for some of us. But for most of us business folk, we are still praying that two thousand thirteen will begin to fill in the very real losses we have suffered the previous three years. Obviously, the last several years have not been easy for any business in Walton County, but we are specifically requesting your help to intentionally keep the health of the local business on Highway ninety-eight in the positive column. We do not want to return to BP two-ten, twenty-ten. I think all of us that received the recent warnings from county code enforcement want to be treated fairly by our county government. Most of us want and need to understand the why of a particular code. We really want to understand why some businesses have apparently been allowed to keep ice machines, movie vending machines, propane gas tank displays, and multiple newspaper racks outside, while another business is not allowed to display an Adirondack chair outside without being in violation of the scenic code. Since the stated purpose of Chapter thirteen is to protect scenic vistas, why do the most impressive vistas along thirty A and Old ninety-eight Scenic Gulf allow the outdoor of display of merchandise adjacent to the public right-of-way? Then why does the Highway ninety-eight corridor have a four-hundred-foot off-limits extending beyond the public right-of-way onto private property? What are we missing here? Both thirty A and Old ninety-eight Scenic Gulf feature magnificent golf and beach views. This is, in stark contrast, to Highway ninety-eight's views of mostly pine trees punctuated by seemingly hundreds of large real estate signs placed adjacent to the public right-of-way? I ask why? So please, can, can we plan to do something positive about this code? Together, let's first try to make sense of it. Let's not allow private interest groups to continue to have a disproportionate influence on so many critical decisions that affect so many folks that earn their living from a business located in the Highway ninety-eight scenic corridor. I urge you, our county commissioners, to engage your local business owners and property owners instead. Like you, it is in the best interest of local business to have the best law, for all of the right reasons, for everyone in Walton County. Our family has two small businesses, Electric Kart Company in Santa Rosa Beach and Southern Power Works based in Defuniac Springs. And I can assure you that my desire and the desire of both of my sons is to continue to grow our businesses, to employ more locals, and to better serve the citizens, property owners, and visitors to Walton County, both North and South Walton County, all of Walton County. Commissioners, local businesses and business owners depend on you. They depend on your decisions that you make as a governing body to provide continuing opportunity for all of our businesses to grow, to continue to be able to support all the families that depend on local businesses for employment. We are here simply to ask that we be treated fairly and be given the best opportunity possible by our county government to succeed. I'm confident you, as the elected officials, feel this is responsibility to the citizens of Walton County. I can assure you, as a business owner, we certainly feel this responsibility to our employees and our customers. So please allow local business owners and local property owners to help you succeed. We want to help. We are your business community and partners in Walton County. So we really need to be engaged, not ignored. Commissioners, I respect your office. I personally thank each one of you for allowing us to make these comments and observations this afternoon. I thank you.
Commissioner Chairman, and I wasn't in office when there was, the scenic corridor was formed. It was formed probably, I guess, where any of us came on board. And I think at that time, it had some validity, because I think there was a vision to make ninety-eight look as attractive as possible. I do think it is time to go back and, and look, and see maybe that we can, we can tweak it a little, or make some concessions for the small businessman. So I don't know how we go about doing that, because there is a scenic corridor association. So I don't, I, you know, y'all, tell me, how do we go about looking at that? And, and, you know, and to me, code enforcement, they're enforcing what's on the books. It's, you know, they're doing their job, they're enforcing what's on the books, and, and maybe it's time that we change what's on the books.
I believe this was looked at a few years back, maybe Mr. Dyson has a little more information on that, but I know that Jason Catalina had worked with the scenic corridor association to tweak some of those issues that he talked about tonight, and they actually had, had agreed to, to work some of those, and I think somebody moved away and it kind of dispelled the mark.
Yeah, good evening. That's right, Mr. DeMiers. This issue first came up, I was informed that, I guess, in two thousand ten, two thousand nine, there was a group that was put together from the, from the scenic association, and they had worked on some modifications of Chapter thirteen. It's my understanding that they did make some proposed changes, and again, the group was made, moved, or moved away, or something that they didn't do before. I do have a copy of what their draft was, and that, that draft did include some limited provision for outside display of merchandise. If the board wishes, we could search that draft to the board for you to review and look at. It did make some concessions, as Commissioner Commander has, has mentioned. And it seems, from my reading of it, it seemed to be, you know, it still protected the scenic corridor, but also it made some allowances for some display, limited display of merchandise in a very nice and neat manner.
Why, why all of a sudden did we start enforcing it? Because it hadn't been enforced, you know?
The outside display of merchandise has, has been enforced. One portion that was not enforced that brought this issue to my attention is, over a period of years, they were allowed to, to display under awning. And so people were displaying things under awning. That was brought to my attention several months ago, maybe, actually, November, December. I looked at the code, and the code says, very, very plain, plain language, plain English, "No outside display of merchandise." Outside, in my mind, I did some research on this, consulted a couple of dictionaries, outside is outside of the walls, doesn't mention anything about under awning. So we've always been, been enforcing the, the portion that's beyond the awning, there has been some allowances over the years verbally to allow it under awning.
And I think that's the problem, it's been verbal, we need to do it right, you know?
Yes.
We need either follow the code, or we need to change the code, and I think we need to look at changing the code.
And it, it looks like in two thousand nine, it was, it was obvious to someone on the design review board that they, you know, there were some reasonable allowances you can make. Again, that never made it up to the board's level, as, as far as actually looking at that and reviewing that. But, but we do have a starting point, if the board so chooses, I'd be glad to circulate around and, and, and bring it back at a future meeting and see if that meets the standards of the board. I'll, I'll be glad to meet with, with the business owners and, and try to get there and put on that as well, and bring it all forth to the boards for a proposal.
But even though it says outside, you know, outside of the building.
Yes, sir.
You know, you've got porches on houses, it's outside, but it's still part of the house. So it looks like, you know, you know, awning, it's still part of the business. It ain't outside, my outside would be outside of the yard, or outside of the table, or something.
Commissioner, the way I, the way I came to think, because the code doesn't provide any definition of what outside is.
Yeah.
So what I looked at is a, is a general term, and how it's generally interpreted, which, and I consulted Webster Dictionary, which is, you know, it's pretty normal, you know, reliable source, and outside of that was basically outside of the walls, and that's, and that's where we came to that, to that conclusion. Personally, from, from a, a display point of view, I think if it's under awning, we see red boxes, we see things like that, if it's under awning, I think it can be done very tactfully and would not, in my opinion, adversely impact the scenic corridor. And again, I think that association several years ago did prepare some drafts that did make those allowances.
And I don't think we need to, again, it's interpretation. If you look at, and you say a porch, but I think when you go to sell a house, you don't, you don't sell the porch, you sell what's under roof. So I think it needs to be clear, it needs to be clear for the people wanting to do it, for the business owners, it needs to be clear for code enforcement, so that they understand, okay, we're saying it can go under awning. You know, it needs to be clear, this interpretation, so I, I think we look at, at modifying it, certainly taking public input and modifying it.
I'd like to see, you mentioned you've got a copy of a draft of something, I'd like to see what.
Sure, absolutely.
As, as I recall, I was, let's see, I think I was, I can't remember, yeah, I was here when that was passed, it was in two thousand or nineteen-nine, or something like that. The intent was, you know, that ninety-eight be, you know, like a pristine, you know, visual, you didn't see anything, and, and I know that that was, I was against that, because I thought that it, that, that some things stored outside and shown outside were kind of beachy, and they added to the, to the creativeness of the area. But I was quickly overruled by one of the larger owners of some large projects in Destin, in Sandestin, that fought very hard to have everything removed out of everywhere. And so that's, that's what happened. And so now, we've got a situation where, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a rule that is not, is not really realistic. It's not realistic. There are a lot of places that are very cool places that have outdoor dining, they have outdoor this, outdoor that, as long as they follow the code. But, so I would be in favor of looking at something a little bit more realistic, but I do know that we got a lot of pushback from a very large owner that did not want to see anything on ninety-eight.
And Commissioner Commander, I'd be glad to meet with them and talk to them as well, and kind of show them, you know, what, what we have as far as the drafts, and sort of come to some kind of reasonable conclusion.
Well, that's, I think we've all agreed we'd like to see it, commissioners, see the draft, because I don't remember ever seeing it.
No, ma'am, it, it was purely at, at a staff and that organization level, we never made it past that. We do have some people who were on staff at the time, who are in attendance, and we do have those. That's a starting point for us to look at, I think would be a good, good place to start.
We'd like to do that. Now, the second part of his request, what do we do in the meantime? Do we, do we?
And Commissioner Commander, we, I would look to board direction as far as that goes, because we have issued, we, we did visit each, each business owner personally and discuss that with them, and, and had them, you know, made them aware of the guidelines and the regulations, and so I was looking to board direction on that.
Can we temporarily suspend the enforcement until we have a chance to look at your draft and, and make a firm decision about which way we want to go? Is that, is that feasible to do?
As long as it's under awning, maybe?
You can, but I want to be very specific about what enforcement you're suspending. I don't want to have these guys in code enforcement and the business owners confused about what enforcement we're suspending. If it's, if you're asking, can you suspend enforcement of a portion of the code, I want to ask you to have to identify the code, because I'm afraid.
I think we need to, I think we need to advertise it as a public hearing, and I think we need to take input, and I think we need to talk about, I think.
And when we get to the code enforcement board process, we can actually say to that board, there might be changes, you might not have to continue these until such time as those changes are made, rather than you guys just suspending enforcement at this point.
Commissioner Matt has some additional information, he would like to share with the board.
Just as a point of clarification, from Mr. Walther's description, he left out a very important point. The reason that he asked for the outside display is because the building he moved into had reflective sheeting on the inside of the windows, and it would be very expensive to either take that off or replace the windows, so you couldn't see his products during the daytime through the glass front of his building. That's why he wanted them outside, and that's where this started, and that's where I think the policy to try to provide some relief came from. But we're a victim of our own success this year. It hasn't exploded. And if you've been to any planning commission meetings lately, the staff gets worn out about the enforcement, or lack of enforcement of outside display of merchandise. So we certainly agree, we need a clear standard, and that's why we put out the notice to everyone that was possibly affected as to what this is going to be, rather than just come down hard on them on that day and say, "You're in violation, come to the code board." So that, I just wanted to make sure you had all the information on that.
It's true, we got time over there. Mr. Chairman, we got time over there.
I too would be in, in agreement with some kind of changes to be able to allow some of the businesses to display to a point, but it got out of hand when you allowed them to display just under the awnings, and then you had people taking advantage of it that spread out through the parking lot, and before you know it, it was up on the right of way. And as far as enforcement of the code, I've been trying for years to get this code enforced, and I'm not just talking about up under the awning, I'm talking about in the parking lot, all over the parking lots, up on the right of way, with, you know, with no luck at all. I don't think it would be quite right to change the code to fit the needs of the violators, and to suspend that rule without giving some tough teeth in there, you're going to have the same thing that I'm dealing with over on North Holiday Road and South Holiday Road with everything everywhere. Because what happened is, one seen somebody do it, and the next one did it, and the next one did it, and it got completely out of hand, and that's why we're having a problem over there. But when you move from one location into another, and you knew about the situation already of what you can and can't display, you know, I feel for them, but being up on the highway, you do have some restrictions up there. So, you know, if you guys are going to, I know you're not going to make any changes tonight, but before you just let these codes be suspended, I think that you should think about these people knowing definitely exactly what you're talking about, they can or can't do. Thank you.
My name is John Kyle, I own Coastal Cruiser Bike Service in Miramar Beach, and I'd like to correct Matt Carpenter in that this didn't stem from Tom from Electric Card having reflective glass on his window. It stemmed from Mrs. Judkins filing a formal complaint against my company, and Steve Fontana from Fantasy Bike and Scooters, which we happen to be in the same business, filed a formal complaint about my displays under my awning on Highway 98. That's, that's all I wanted, that's the point I wanted to make, is that this started from a formal complaint to the county. It wasn't any, that's the point I wanted to make.
Before we do anything, I mean, this is a, this is a much bigger issue than just this one. I think the whole issue of code enforcement and our rules, which ones are we going to enforce, which ones we're not, how are we going to interpret it, who's going to interpret it, needs to be the conversation.
And I'm not thinking, I'm not comfortable with the idea of suspending any enforcement that's out there right now. I think we let that process go. Obviously, when we get to the code enforcement board, which I sit with that board, you know, we can inform them that you guys are certainly considering changes, and there might be, there might be appropriate times to wait on those changes, but we would need to do that on a case-by-case basis, I think.
Mr. Chairman, we might have staff at a workshop to try to bring all this stuff together, get us ready back in a consolidated recommendation.
They're good, they're good.
Yeah, I think you need to get public input.
Yeah, well, if we have staff to hold a workshop, to get everybody together, get the input, and at least allow us to take a look at, at the draft that you talked about too, so we get some idea about what was being proposed.
Sure, absolutely.
Then, then come on back, and we can address it in a more comprehensive fashion.
Glad to be back today.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next one, Mr. Judkins.
Commissioners, I'm here again tonight, I came before this board about three months ago with safety issues on Holiday Road, and it, and the situation over there hasn't gotten any better, and I told you then that, you know, as the summer starts to come around, it's going to get worse, and that's pretty much exactly what it's done. I've got pictures, different dates of pictures, this is going on every day over there. Again, these businesses don't have the room to operate on their own property, and all's I'm asking for is the county to step up and enforce the codes and protect the health, safety, and the welfare of the citizens that use North Holiday Road, because it's completely out of hand over there. And as the season gets closer, you've got more semis coming in, you've got more people coming through there, and, 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 you know, I heard a lot about, you know, the safety out on 30A. The county, you know, the county's liable if somebody gets hurt or killed in an accident in the right of way, when these businesses are doing their work, and that's what they're doing, is doing all this work. All, all these pictures you're looking at is pretty much on county right of way. You know, some of these businesses started out, and they weren't so big, some of the businesses don't even belong there, they're not allowed, and they've grown, and now that they've grown, you've got more of them, you've got, you've got two and three businesses that have grown so big, they're spread out all over the neighborhood, and most of their work's being done on county right of way. And every time I go to turn into my driveway, I've got to watch from behind me, and, and with these semis being in the right of way, I have no which way to veer, you know, because I'm going to veer right into a semi or a car or whatever, golf cart, whatever, sitting right over there in the right of way. And it's not just me, it's, there's a lot of people that travel this road, both directions, you know, they were just loading and unloading on one side of the street, and parking on one side of the street, now they're doing the exact same thing on the other side of the street. And, you know, those pictures, that's what's going on. I don't see how anybody can look at those pictures and, and allow this continue anymore. And I'm asking for you guys, this time, you know, I came before the board three months ago, and told you it was going to get worse, because the season's coming around, and it's,
What is the solution here, Mr. Dice?
You know, I, to me, those trucks are in our right of way.
It's in the right of way, and, and, that's, I guess it would be, of course, in the county's right of way. I'm not sure if planning has a solution for it, but it may be some other method that we could utilize.
I don't know if there's a planning or a...
Public works.
Public work solution, other than, you know, maybe, if they're parking in the right of way, loading and unloading, maybe the sheriff's department needs to be advised, because that's clearly, I believe, clearly violating traffic law in, in the area, and they need to be cited. But I don't know if there's a planning or, or public work solution to what are concerned.
Mr. Chairman, is there any, any parking signs posted out there? I don't, I don't...
There are, there are, no parking in, you know, this past years back for that. But even, you know, beside that, they're doing it everywhere, all over North Holiday Road, and any of you that's been down there know that that's not a big road.
So, and this is one of the issues that arises from the changing of uses in these buildings over the course of years, no enforcement on that, no requirement for them to have loading and unloading zones out of the right of way, so, the, the, what you're getting here is you're, you're, this, this is going to be a problem all over, it already is. When a, when a building changes uses, and nobody's notified, and then they just keep changing it and changing it, and then they've got deliveries made all day, and they have no delivery spaces, this is what we're going to get. And it is a planning issue, because we've got to come up with some kind of policy on where, if, if a building changes uses and/or expands, we, they must have adequate parking, and they must have adequate drop delivery, I mean, and, and loading and unloading.
I didn't mean planning in terms of, there's no solution within, what I'm saying is, is under our current statute ordinance, is, I don't know that we have a solution in place. An occupational, you know, I don't want to push it, a policy...
But that's, that's going to help, that's, that's going to help, but the Judkins have been complaining about this for as long as I can remember, and it wasn't this bad, and the county would never...
And some of these businesses aren't new, they've grown. You know, there are new, and the, and the planning maybe should have stopped it before the new ones moved in, and you did, you do have certificate of, of occupancy. What are the licenses that we, it's a certificate?
Of land use.
Land use, okay, that tells...
It's optional, it's, it's not, it's nobody, they don't have to, I mean, you know, there's...
But when they do come in for it, most people who open a business have the common sense to go check out the land use, most people who open the business have the common sense to be safe and to stay on their own property, but these guys, I mean, it's out of hand, my life's in danger every single day.
Can't we, can't we do something about these things, but it's an endangerment of life and limb? I mean, can't we, do anything about that? I mean, you cannot unload, you know, we had a young man killed on 38, the flatbed truck unloaded in the middle of the road. It seems to me that, that these, somebody ought to meet with these folks and say, look, you know, you're going to get sued, we're going to get sued, something's got to be done.
Commissioner, oftentimes, I have a short answer, but I don't know, I don't say that at a meeting like this, but, but I am sympathetic, I actually rode down there and...
Yeah, it's not, it's not a new issue, these, these businesses are aware of the situation.
Can the county...
Yeah.
And what I would like to do, I had a meeting scheduled with her, and it didn't work out for whatever reason, I, I would like the opportunity to see, to answer your question a little more clearly, if, if there is something we can do in our current ordinance or law structure to, to address that, that very specific problem, these folks parking on the side, parking in the right of way, unloading, you know, how long they're there, what are they doing there, why are they there? It's going to take a little investigation then to see if we can do anything, and I'll be blunt with her, and blunt with you, if we can, we can, if we can't, we cannot. But I, I agree that, that's a problem we should look at. There were a number, I rode down there at 10 o'clock in the morning that morning, just because I had a meeting coming out of Destin, and I was surprised at the number of people coming and going with larger trucks, not all semis, obviously, but just larger trucks.
Is there any way that the county could look at an alternate, an alternate road behind these places? I don't know if there's any right of way or anything that, that they would have to unload behind their units, or some kind of geographic fix to it, another road?
Yeah, I, I'll certainly ask with public works to take a look at that, see if that's impossible.
Mr. Davis, who, you know, while we wait, because I've been waiting for, you know, well over 10 years on the county to take action on this, so, you know, and for the county to have to supply room or, you know, road for these businesses, you know, if you're going to start supplying room for businesses, I want some. But, you know, for, for now, while we're waiting, while my lives and lots of other lives are in danger every day, who is responsible if somebody gets hit or killed right there on that road on the county right of way?
Well, the person who created the hazard is the most, mostly responsible, and that would be the person parking the truck there and creating the hazard.
So, even though it's on county property?
They would sue all counties, or they'd sue us.
I mean, they're going to sue us anyway, but, but the most responsible person, we have comparative negligence in this state, the most responsible person would be the person who created the hazard, and that's the business person who has that truck there.
Well, I'm asking the board to please get this moved, you know, it's really dangerous for me to have to stop right there on the curb, I'm on the curb, and try to shoot that way. You know, I've got to see around the blind curve for one, and when, then you've got semis on here and the people coming around, they can't see, it's going to happen, and it's getting worse every day. I'm, I'm starting coming in and out of my driveway a lot every day, so it's affecting me more, because now my business is picking up, just as summers come in, just like theirs are, you know, but it's a big problem, and they, you know, the businesses are aware of it, they've been aware of it, the businesses, the property owners, but, you know, they just continue to do it because the county's not putting their foot down and stopping it.
But one of the things you have here too, as I've noticed, is, you know, it's one big curb cut, it, it's all pavement, and so, why couldn't you design it so they have a frontage road, they have to pull off on their frontage road, and you have a strip in between where they are coming and going and the rest of the road, and maybe you, maybe you straighten out that, that blind curve, you know, something...
And maybe as simple as admitting the code to require load, all loading and unloading be done on property where the loading and unloading is, is for, I mean, maybe something is just as simple as that, but yes, we will do it all.
I think that that's already, I mean, it is already a requirement in the code.
There is, yeah, there is a code that says you cannot load and unload in the middle of the right of way.
So, what, I mean, or just nothing again, I'm getting, I'm hit.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, because I've been on the job for, I will give you something, I'll give the commissioners something, I told you, we will either have an answer, yes or no, we can or cannot do something, and I'll let you know what they...
I'd like to see, if we can get aerial photographs and mapping on it, get all the mapping and see if there's any alternative solution, route them somewhere else, or put in a frontage road for them with a separation, or realign that road, or something in the way of, of design that might help that situation.
Well, there's also property there that these business owners could buy, if it's for sale, that if they wanted to get on their own property, they could, so that's another option, but, you know, they're not being forced to follow the law, so I guess they're not going to follow the law.
Or some other, or there may be even some other enforcement option that we can look at as well.
A lot of places do not allow these kinds of trucks on these local roads, they make them offload somewhere else, and then drive the materials in on smaller trucks, but...
I'm curious about that.
Um, I don't know that this will help, but it might, I was going to bring it up later. I had a meeting with the sheriff about three weeks ago, we talked about spring break and what we did right and what we did wrong, and what we could do better next year, and that's one thing, and one of the things that, an option that he, that he presented to me, is that he would give our code enforcement the authority to write traffic tickets, I think all he has to do is sign the letter, this, I believe that's the way the sheriff explained it to me, and so that we could write traffic tickets for people that are parking in the right of way. I realize every time we call sheriff, it may or may not be possible for him to come down, but if we could give code enforcement that authority, and in the same, and, you know, there's a comment behind that, we're going to have to beef up code enforcement. We can't expect them to do it, it'll just repeat, but that might be an option, is to, because I think code enforcement might be able to respond faster. I, I don't know, but that's, that's an option that the sheriff gave me, and is willing to, to give to code enforcement if we so desire.
Okay, I appreciate your help. I'm on the agenda next, because I'm here, this was what I was trying to meet up with you for, Mr. Davis, but then, you know, I don't understand why there has to be meeting or why I'm even here. I've been trying for the last couple of months just to get a response, either yes or no, from Mr. Dice as to the uses that he's allowing Coastal Cruiser, which moved up onto the front row of the Highway 98, the uses that he's allowing there, because the uses that are currently being allowed to be there, whether they're being allowed or whether he's aware of it, are not allowed. They've got scooters, motorcycles, golf carts, boats, maybe bringing in four-wheelers now, I mean, if it doesn't stop, we have planes and trains. All's I want is an answer from Mr. Dice, is this, is, is he allowing all these uses to be there? And, you know, from what I understood from his first response, he was, so then I filed an appeal, appealing that response, which is the correct procedure, it cost me $450, and close to 30 days later, he writes me back and said, well, that that decision has already been made, so therefore you can't appeal the decision. So, I turned around and thought, spent another $450, appealing that decision, because what I'm complaining about has not been decided. There was a board of adjustments hearing on scooters only. This business has expanded, like I said, to motorcycles and boats and golf carts, all of these are vehicles, they're not allowed to be over there, and on top of that, he's displaying them, not just up under his awning, but they've been everywhere, I've given you pictures of those at the meeting before, at his other location, which was on scenic corridor, just wasn't on the front row. So, I'm, I'm just here to get an answer from Mr. Dice, and I've sent many of you emails, if I could just get a response, I shouldn't have to come here to get it, but now that I'm here, if I can just get an answer as to, are you allowing all these uses to be okay at that location? That's all I need to know. And if he is, then I can appeal, and if he's not, then I don't have to appeal.
And while he's coming up, Ms. Judkins, I know you did, you know, you did email me, but I thought this needs to be a board decision, not just one commissioner's.
I've written two or three letters to Ms. Judkins, explaining to her that the decision about the question she asked to the uses, that decision was made by Commissioner Nemirz, it was appealed, the board adjustment, I believe it even took the court. The only decision that I've made is that telling her that that decision's already been made, and I'm not making another decision, because I believe it's already been addressed by the public board adjustments in 2010, I'm saying that timeframe. So, it's already been decided, I don't know why I have to decide again, because it's already been decided, she's trying to appeal the decision that I'm not making, because it's already been appealed once, and already been decided. once and already been decided and going to the board adjustments and going to the circuit court.
What is a better, maybe I'm missing something, but wouldn't a better solution be if Ms. Judkins feels like there's something going on on this side that's outside the code or the court or guidelines, to file a code enforcement complaint?
Well, I, you know, I filed, I complained to code enforcement, but, you know, he's saying this has already been decided.
Well, let me, let me ask you, did they respond or?
They just do nothing, Mike. Now it's like I'm constantly complaining.
Why don't we consider your complaint, deny the code enforcement complaint, direct code enforcement to look into?
Okay, well.
And we will certainly investigate it, and just need to know exactly what the complaint is.
Let me make sure I understand that, it's, it's things are being displayed outside of
No, the uses are being allowed over there, and I do believe that code enforcement and Mr. Dice is, is aware of what's going on. My question
Maybe that's all we need to be, so make sure I understand the complaint, because I'm catching up with you. The complaint then is not the display, the complaint is that the business doesn't have the right to sell what it's selling.
Sell, rent, or repair. But my question that I came here for tonight is, are you allowing him to have other uses there besides scooters?
Well, first of all, I believe that there's a disagreement about what uses are actually there, first of all. And that's what we start at. And again, the appeal that I received was a judgment, it was almost identical to the appeal that was filed in 2010. And that's why I said, it's the same appeal. You know, there's no point in making a decision to this argument, and according to the code, the appeal was final once it goes to board adjustments. So even if I didn't, I mean, when that began, that was a final decision that's already made. Now, again, we would be glad to go out there with code enforcement and look at this, and I just need to know exactly what the specific complaints are, so we can go line by line.
Mr. Davis, I've got two days.
Go line by line and, and, and look at those issues and address each one of those items that she's complaining about, and then we can make, make our findings as far as code enforcement, and if the code enforcement board is certain we'll do that.
Mr. Davis, I've got two days to appeal his last decision and spend another $450 before my, as a lawyer, you understand my time limit. So if I don't get some kind of a, you know, Mr. DeMere's made this decision, and yes, he did, I agree, this decision was, you know, determined, but it was just regarding scooters. Am I, am I wrong or right?
Mr. Chairman, the challenge at that time was whether or not that business could be located at that location. And it had to do with being able to rent motor scooters, kayaks, and bicycles, I believe, was, was what the complaint was. And the board adjustments found that that business was allowed there, he appealed that, I think, to the circuit court, and they upheld that decision.
And, and, you know, just to make it clear for you, here's judgment courts, you know, just to make sure what I appealed, petitioner appealed administrative decision of the planning director of development involving an issue of temporary sign permit and whether scooter rentals is an allowable use within the coastal layout of land use. So, you know, there was no decision made on motorcycles and golf carts and boats and four-wheelers and whatever else he decides to put in there that isn't consistent with what the code is. So, you know, if, if I can just get from Mr. Dice tonight, so I don't have to spend another $450 to, $450 again tomorrow, because these $450 are sitting up here piling up, I can't afford to keep putting $450. If I could just get an answer as, are you allowing him to expand from scooters and bikes to any of those other uses?
Again, I have not made a decision to even appeal from. I'm, I'm, that's why I've told, written her letters and correspondence, saying I have not made a decision, there's nothing to appeal, I've not made a decision. All I've said is, that decision, that decision made, I just informed her, that decision was made in 2010. And that's all I've done. Now, again, if there's a complaint, we're going to look at it, and then if from that complaint arrives and something that is new, then obviously that would be something that would be applicable, or we would take it to the code board.
Guys, I, I did, you know, I don't mean to keep you in a problem, but I've only got two, two more days before I have to spend that next $150. And I did, when that business moved over there, I did write Vivian as soon as I found out they had a certificate of land use compliance. And I explained to her that, does she realize that they're renting bicycles, motor scooters, mopeds, motorcycles, golf carts, tin boats, and whatever else? And I said, "If you can't," because they wouldn't answer me. I said, "If you can't answer, we send me to somebody who can." And Mr. Dice's response was, "I have received a certificate land use for Coastal Center and find it to be in compliance with Coastal Center." Now, he's, you know, is he answering me off of these uses that I sent to Vivian Samuel? Because if he is, in my opinion, and any lawyer's going to twist it and turn it to, you know, to, to be there, I can't lose my 30 days. So if Mr. Dice can just simply say that, you know, if they are renting mopeds, motorcycles, golf carts, boats, four-wheelers, no, Sherry, they're not allowed, then I can stop with giving another, but if he doesn't, I have to spend another $450, and I don't think that that's fair, that I have to keep, I mean, we could play this game for months and for, we could just keep on going with these, you know, him trying, it's just not fair. Why can't I just get an answer that says, you know, he is not allowed to have sell, service, run, or repair because the book says he can't. Motorcycles, golf carts, boats, four-wheelers, he's not allowed to have that. Why can't I not just get that? Because it's written in the book, that's all I'm asking for. Because if I can't get it, then you know I have to spend another $450, and my 30 days tells me I'm gone.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to answer or?
Yes, sure.
Ms. Judkins, I'm hearing three different things, but I think what you're down to is, I think what I'm hearing is, you believe that the uses that are taking place at this, obviously this lady's business behind you are not consistent with the code. I think that's a code enforcement question. So file the request for code enforcement, that's not an administrative decision, that's a code enforcement.
I did that right here, I just wrote that to you.
Obviously, the continuing, you can always file again. You can file a code enforcement complaint, that's the solution.
And Mark agreed with you about that.
Okay.
Okay, so I do not have a determination that he is or is not allowed to rent motorcycles, golf carts, boats, content.
I have not made it, I mean, I have not made a determination for that.
Okay, so you're saying he can't rent them, you just haven't signed it. See, that's what I mean, it's just a game.
And I have no idea what he's, what he, I have no idea what's there today. I don't know.
That's why, that's why you filed a code enforcement.
Hi, my name is Rose Mary. My husband John and I own the business Coastal Cruisers. Got some questions. Do you speak your ass back, please? Uh, Kyle. Kyle. Kyle, K-I-O-N. We have had numerous complaints, probably daily, from other businesses about what we do. We do rent, sell, and repair bicycles. We rent kayaks, we rent paddleboards. We do not rent motorcycles. We have two employees that ride motorcycles that are seen in the property. We do own a pontoon boat, as do most people in this area, they own boats. We have had friends use our boat and they do pay us for that, but we don't keep a boat there. We have had a boat there before, but we have always come into compliance whenever we have a complaint. You can go through any complaint over the past five, six years, and there are no violations, no violations, or we get into code, we get into code. We've always been very compliant and we will continue to be. We want to do business in this county and we'll stay doing, we will continue to do business in this county, and we will stay compliant. We're going to go with whatever is told for us to do, whatever the code is, but we do want it to be fair for everybody. That was one of the comments that, or what Mr. Waltrip was here for tonight, was to get it fair for everybody. We all want to have a fair display of property. We do display our property under the awnings, as do 41 other businesses in this county on Highway 98. It is something that the, is allowed on County 30, uh, how, excuse me, Highway 30A and Seane at 98 as well. And the complaints we get are from other businesses that aren't even on Highway 98 or aren't affected by the Seane corridor ordinances. So we just want to do fair business and we will do whatever the county says we should do. We will remain compliant, but we do want to be able to do business and be profitable like anyone else is in the county, so, thank you.
Commissioner Meadows?
Yes, speaking about code enforcement, I just wanted to, to go over the hours of operation again. I think I have, I've had some